I'll call to order the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and Glendale Economic Development Corporation for January 24th. We'll call, please.
We'll call for council members. Council members Garpetian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Sananian?
Here.
Mayor Devine?
Here.
And we'll call for the board. Board members Garpetian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Sananian?
Here.
Chair Devine?
Here. And what's next?
The Jennifer, January 24th, 2017, joint public meeting of the city council and the Economic Development Corporation was posted on Friday, January 20th, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. The first item is Director of Community Development regarding Glendale Arts Fiscal Year 2015, '16, Third and Fourth Quarter Reports, Financial Statements, and Independent Auditors' Report for June 30th, 2015 and 2016. One A is City Council Motion to Note and File the Glendale Arts Quarterly Reports for the periods of January 1st, 2016 through July 1st, 2016, Third and Fourth Quarter of Fiscal Year 2015, 2016, and the Financial Statements and Independent Auditors' Report for June 30th, 2015 and 2016.
Thank you.
One B is...
Was that it?
No. One B is Glendale Economic Development Corporation Motion to Note and File the Glendale Arts Quarterly Reports for the periods of January 1st, 2016 through July 1st, 2016, Third and Fourth Quarter of Fiscal Year 2015, 2016, and the Financial Statements and Independent Auditors' Reports for June 30th, 2015 and 2016. And the last item on this agenda is Director of Community Development Regarding Tech Strategy Plan Report Completion. Two A is Motion to Note and File.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. We have a good breadth of information regarding our partners at Glendale Arts, and so with that, we'll have Jen McLean come up and give you an overview, but also the executive director of Glendale Arts, Lisa Glickman, is here with us, and she'll be able to answer any questions that you may have. So, Jen?
Great. Well, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council. We'll just go ahead and pull up this PowerPoint. So, before you today, as our city clerk read off, is the Glendale Arts Fiscal Year 2015 and '16, Third and Fourth Quarter Updates, along with a two-year audit report. My intent of the... my portion of the presentation today is really to provide you with a big-picture overview of the Alex Theater and Glendale Arts financials. But as Mr. Ochoa mentioned, we also have in the audience Alyssa Glickman, and she's the executive director of the Alex Theater and Glendale Arts, and she'll be available to answer any of your questions that you may have about the financials or the overall operations related to the Alex Theater and Glendale Arts. So, as you may have noticed in going through the reports, we have the financials for both the Alex Theater and Glendale Arts. We do this because Glendale Arts is responsible for managing the Alex Theater, and Glendale Arts shares some of the same resources. So, it's difficult to take a look at one set of financials without also observing the other financials from Glendale Arts. As a reminder, the mission of Glendale Arts is to integrate the arts into the identity, growth, and economic vitality of the city of Glendale by presenting programming and creating partnerships that benefit youth, patrons, artists, organizations, and businesses in the community and the Alex Theater. Again, just by way of background, but the city council approved a management agreement with Glendale Arts on August 13th, 2015, and there are several provisions within this management agreement. One of them is that the city actually pays Glendale Arts for the management of the theater, and included in this is a sliding scale of what we pay to Glendale Arts. So, we just paid them $415,000. We'll do that again this year as well, and you can see how it progresses through 2020. The goal is to eventually have Glendale Arts and the Alex Theater be self-sustainable. Other provisions within the agreement include things such as requiring quarterly updates and audit, asset inventory, hitting a number... a minimum number of bookings. The provision within the quarterly report and the audit is why we're here today. And just one other element to hit on, the term expires in 2020, and at the conclusion of that, there's an option to renew for 10 years. So, as you take a look at the numbers, the periods cover from January 1st to July 1st, 2016, and there's a number of highlights to be encouraged by. The first of which is that bookings are up. Bookings hit 225 compared to 177 last year, and some of these bookings include shows such as rehearsals, cultural performances, music, community fense, and TV and film shoots. So, I'm sure many of you attended some of these events. These include the Armenian Genocide Commemoration, Los Angeles Ballet, the Gay Men's Chorus of Los Angeles, and live talks featuring speakers such as Mindy Kaling. Just to return to some of the highlights here, additionally, we saw patrons go up. We hit 84,000 last year in total, and this in turn has a direct impact on our local economy. These patrons help contribute to a total of $1.4 million supporting our local businesses and restaurants. And then finally, something to be proud of, that Glendale Arts has a surplus. It hit $199,000 this year. I just wanted to highlight this point. When you take a look at this graph up here, this hopefully can illustrate the story a bit. The green dots are good, the orange dots are bad. So, you can see here over a five-year period that for the first time in two years, we had a surplus at Glendale Arts, and for the first time in five years, this was the largest surplus that it experienced. You can see, too, how this story plays out. In 2013 is when the Alex Theater completed or started its expansion project, and that's when we added about 6,600 feet... square feet of backstage facilities. We were hoping that by 2014, '15, we would be able to rebound from some of the construction, but unfortunately, we were still not able to fully rebound from that. In this most recent year, what we found is that through additional marketing and word-of-mouth, we were able to recoup some of those lost performances, and then we were able to get the resident companies as well. So, this hopefully tells a good story and one that we are hoping will continue through future years. Other bright spots to point out, as far as concessions go, in the third quarter, Alex Theater obtained a full liquor license, and this is really an entrepreneurial venture that we expect to continue as well. Concession sales hit about $85,000, more than doubling its budgeted amount. We expect this projection to continue because the Alex Theater has plans to expand its bar offerings on the second floor as well. Another point to highlight is the box office sales. They tripled compared to the previous year, up to 393,000. And the community and fundraising efforts as well, we continue to see just how that positively benefited the Alex Theater as well as the community. And these include events, which again, I'm sure that you were a part of, such as the Taste of Downtown Glendale, pop-up music, and planning with the Open Arts and Music Festival. I did just want to highlight the illuminate project. This is one that I know Mrs. Glickman was very, very proud of. What the point... excuse me, Ms. Glickman. With the illuminate campaign, the goal was to restore the 100-foot Art Deco Tower and to kick off the efforts on the Alex Theater's 90th birthday. The goal was achieved, and they were able to generate $67,000. So, this was also a positive step in what a mission-driven fundraising campaign can do and one that we expect will continue, efforts such as that throughout the years to come. And again, I know that there's a number of financials before you, so this... just in way of a snapshot here. The third quarters... the third quarter information, what you'll see is the figures were low. Alex Theater lost about $17,000 in this period, and... excuse me, they lost about $17,000 that quarter. In the fourth quarter, what you saw is nearly 74 events were booked, up from about 48 the previous quarter at that time, and we saw revenue increase as well. Just one thing to keep in mind, that the number of bookings has a correlation with not only the increase in revenue, but an increase in expenses. So, while your revenue is going to go up, so are your expenses, and we saw this play out in this quarter as well. So, just a few takeaways as you're reviewing these reports, and again, Ms. Glickman is available to answer some of the specific questions here. But really, Glendale Arts is working towards financial sustainability, and we see that as evidenced by the increase in the number of bookings and their surplus. But keep in mind, they still relied on that management fee to attain that surplus. Another thing to note is that the second takeaway, expenses will continue to increase as bookings go up. This is important to note as by 2020, they're expected to have a total of 245 bookings. That doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get a net revenue from those, that you're going to just... again, as you generate more bookings, there are costs associated with that as well. Third point is that fundraising will be... continue to be a vital campaign, or excuse me, will continue to play a pivotal role in their efforts. Finally, we have the entrepreneurial ventures such as the obtaining the full liquor license, so that will continue to help develop a future revenue stream. And lastly, it appears that Glendale Arts and Alex Theater are on a healthy trajectory for long-term success and sustainability. So, with that, I would like to ask if the council has any questions and to invite Ms. Glickman to the podium as well to address any of these specific questions. If there are no further questions, the requested council action is to note and file the third and fourth quarter reports for fiscal year 2015, '16, and to accept the audit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very comprehensive report, I have to say. Thank you. Any questions or comments from my fellow council members?
I'd like to hear.
From...
Ms. Glickman.
Thank you. Do you have questions for her?
After she speaks.
I'm sorry? Do you have anything to say, Alyssa? Councilmember Garpetian is asking you to...
Oh, do I have anything to add?
I know I should never ask you that because I know...
I know, because I'll just keep talking. No, very quickly, I think it was an incredible year, and just as a note, we are actually hoping to get to 250 rental dates by 2020, and that is pretty much the cap of where we expect our rentals to go. We've had a great second quarter this year, sort of an iffy first quarter this year, but I think overall, we're going to balance out and hit our goal of 235. So, I'm really enthusiastic about the mix of programming that we've had over the last two years, and I think our increasing staff has worked incredibly hard to not only build a solid foundation for fundraising, but also for our rental department. And I see Mr. Garpetian has his calculator out, so now I'm concerned.
Well, I just have a... while he's doing his calculations...
Sure. I'm scared.
You mentioned that the fundraising for the 90th birthday, that you reached $67,000. What was your goal? The goal was...
Our goal was to just cover the cost of the project, and the project was $70,000. So, we hit $67,000. Our goal now is to keep the illuminate project alive over the next couple of years and build a cash reserve. There's already additional repairs that need to be done to the tower in Marquee, so that's going to be an ongoing challenge for our organization to keep that alive and going. I think the significant change was obviously changing out the interior incandescent lights with LED. That technology is still holding strong, and the color palette is still a throwback to the original design. Some of the neon, especially at the top ball, is starting to go out already. Of course, that's the most expensive part of the repair, always the way that that happens. So, we anticipate that the tower in Marquee will probably annually cost us somewhere between $5,000 and $7,500, and we want to keep that project going until we at least have a solid base. We had a small fundraiser in November where we raised about half of the $5,000 needed, and so we're going to continue that effort throughout the year as well.
And of course, I guess it stands to reason that the quality of the bookings, rather than the quantity, is what is important.
It's a mixture. I mean, as a public venue, we quite honestly can't say no to anyone. If someone comes to us and fills out an application and can pay for the event, as a public entity, it's not our place to judge really the value of their artistic quality. That being said, our board and our staff has set aside what we call rental subsidies. This year, we're on track to do about $150,000 in rental discounts to nonprofits, resident companies, and businesses that we hope to attract to the Alex Theater, and we find that when you don't have available dates on the calendar, you can more accurately curate the type of programming that comes through your doors. So, our goal is to really fill as many dates with the quality programming or the voids that we see need filling. We still have some work to do, but we do see, or at least I... in the almost 13 years I've been with the organization, I think that the quality of the programming over the last few has been significant.
I think you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Mr. Garpetian, are you...
I'd like to hear my fellow council members while I'm finishing my...
He's still doing mathematics.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian?
So, we're in uncharted territory here, and you guys are throwing off a profit. What should we do with that? Are we going to share in that? Are you going to put that in a reserve fund?
Oh, it's spent? No.
I mean, reserve fund for capital or reserve fund for operations? Are you going to say that we don't have to make our... in the future would not need to make our management fee contribution?
So, just to be clear, in the numbers that you see, especially in the ticket revenue line item, some of that profit is restricted dollars anyway. So, again, we charge that $2.50 per ticket fee. That's included in our overall income for the organization. Those dollars are put into restricted accounts for capital projects, for facility, programming subsidies, as well as an art fund. So, while on paper, we have close to a $200,000 profit, of that, $189,000 is restricted, and the rest was used to pay off internal loans as well as some of our other earned income revenue streams. So, at the moment, while, as I said, on paper, it looks like we've turned a profit, most of those dollars are already restricted to the venue, and in addition, the profit is really being invested back into things like staffing and other earned and contributed income streams. So, one of the things you'll see when we deliver our first and second quarter report this year is that we significantly increased staffing, both at the Alex Theater as well as in our fundraising department at Glendale Arts. So, some of those surpluses are then reinvested back into the organization so that we can continue on that trajectory. Hopefully, by 2020, as we start to move down our sliding scale of the management fee, we will continue to be able to increase our profitability, and at that time, when we reevaluate and renegotiate our lease beyond 2020, there'll either be a much smaller management fee or there'll be some other structure that's provided because we'll already be offsetting those dollars.
Are you guys... are your employees under the PERS system, or is it private completely?
We're private. We're a private nonprofit organization. We cover everything from workers' comp to vacation to healthcare. You can see from our numbers that our single largest cost to the organization is human resources. So, for example, our medical insurance this year just went up about 35%, partly because medical insurance went up and partly because we had increased number of people that were receiving those benefits. Other things like 401K benefits, which is what our staff participates in, Glendale Arts does a 3% match. So, once they hit their certain period of time, that 3% match comes out of any dollars that we have as a part of the organization.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garpetian?
Do you want to go first, Mr.?
No, he has...
I could keep talking about other things if you'd like.
Stop, dear. A couple of quick questions, just for my own information. We have 225 bookings, right?
Correct.
And we served about 84,272 patrons. That's what the report said.
Correct.
So, if I divide that by 252, I end up with 374 people.
Well, let's also keep in mind that bookings aren't just public performances. Bookings include load-ins, rehearsals, non-public-type events. Yeah, so on average, we figure that we saw at least 750 people per performance based on the number of actual audience-attended performances at the venue.
My question is, how many events do we have that the entire hall is booked? I mean, is it like 5, 10, 50, 100? That's what I... Because I know there are so many events that nonprofits hold and which is very nice.
Sellouts, you mean? Sellouts?
Yeah, sold-out events.
Yeah, I would say probably... and it varies year to year. It varies based on the type of performances that we have. I would say in the last fiscal year, we probably had about 12% to 13% of our performances that were sold-out engagements. And then we certainly had a couple of performances that, you know, couldn't pull more than 200 people. It's just one of those crap shoots. But one of the things that we did see, and one of the bright spots, is after the construction, we lost two key resident companies, which was the Gay Men's Chorus and the Musical Theater Guild. They actually came back in the last fiscal year due to challenges that they had with the venues that they left us for, and the Gay Men's Chorus especially is pulling sold-out performances at all of their shows. So, being able to reattract those businesses back to the venue helps to increase that overall number. But again, because we're not producing the events, we're not marketing the events, the promoters are, we can't fully participate in how they're drawing and pulling people.
I understand. So, 10% to 12%, is that what you said?
Roughly 10% to 12% are sold out.
Okay, so about like 30. Okay. Going back to the numbers, I have the numbers from... that ended up in June 30th, 2015, then I found this other one, which is from January to March of 2016, and I want to make sure I'm reading this right because they're very small print here in this report.
So, you're looking at the fourth quarter as well as the third quarter because they're two separate quarters?
No, it says page 2 of 2. It says profit and loss year comparison, January through March, 2016.
Okay.
So, we have the salaries and wages, hourly wages, accounting, payroll charges, contract labors. What are contract labors?
Contract labors are people like costumers, wardrobe people. We have people that are working with us in office to build databases. It's anyone who's not necessarily on the payroll but comes in and does spec work. When we bring in a TV production or a large event like LA Ballet, sometimes they'll ask us to bring in contract labor that they then reimburse us for.
And then we have the... our employer expenses. I added them up. It's like $350,000 or $342,000. And am I reading this gross profit right, which is $420,000? $420,309?
You're looking at 2 of 2 of P and L?
Yes, January through March, 2016.
Okay. Sorry, the page numbers are a little off, and I want to make sure that I'm looking at the same page as you. I have 2 of 2, but it looks like I'm missing 1 of 2. Wait, there's 1 of 2.
I'm on 2 of 2.
Well, then, I should go back to that page. Okay. And so you are looking specifically at which number? I'm sorry.
The gross profit, $420,309.
If we're looking at the same thing, and yes, the number is small, I have $457,352?
Then we're not looking at the same thing.
Are we looking at the same thing?
Mr. Garpetian, I think you... the gross... it's gross profit is really gross revenue.
Yeah.
Oh, I see where he is. I'm sorry.
So, then if you come down... so, the gross revenue was $420.
Right.
Oh, he's talking here. Okay. My apologies.
And the line below... expenses starts from the line below?
Correct. My apologies.
No worries. And within that $420 is our... $450,000, one fourth of it is in that?
So, that is realized in the first quarter of each fiscal year.
Right, $100,000. So, if you take that out, our employee charges or our salaries and benefits are almost as much as our gross income is. I'm going to do the same thing every year, so I'm just pointing this out that we need to really, especially nowadays, look into how are we going to manage our finances?
Sure. Well, let's... I mean, let's put all of our cards on the table. The reality is, is that we receive a $415,000 a year management fee. This is the last year for that. Next year, it's $200,000. We realize that in the first quarter of each fiscal year, but if you look at our overall surplus for the year, total $200,000. That's essentially the reduction that we're going to see next year. So, our goal, and it's incumbent upon us to be able to not only continue this positive trajectory, but also close that gap. We have identified fundraising and rentals... rentals is about 85% of our business, as the two clearest ways in order to keep that gap closed. And in order for that to happen, we had to invest in human resources, and I agree. It's a huge dollar amount for the organization each year, and we have a scalability plan over the next couple of years if we're not able to achieve that gap closure. But the key is for us to continue to use our resources to reinvest so that contributed income and earned income offset the management fee that we will gradually lose through 2020. I don't know if that answers your question, but we are keenly aware of some of the same things that I think that you're pointing out.
It's like any other business. If your employee cost is 80% of your revenues, no business will survive. So, I'm just keep going to that thing every quarter. So, we have to work on this hard, I think.
I think the real key thing that you will note, especially on the Alex Theater side, is that hourly income especially is directly tied to the number of rental dates that we do each year. If rentals go down, then our hourly wages go down. Really, where we're looking at probably higher overhead is some of the shared overhead expense between Glendale Arts and the Alex Theater when it comes to administrative and executive management. And truly, when I talk executive management, I mean department heads, people that oversee the rental department, people that oversee the theater operations, and people that oversee the now newly-created fundraising department, and then the administrative staff that falls beneath them.
And one item that was in the 2015 report, and maybe it's seen here, but it's, you know, worded differently, is the employee benefits. We had about $50... where am I? $51,000 in 2015. Here, in the first quarter, I don't see that in this report.
We actually made some accounting changes to our bookkeeping. That used to be under a different area in our budget, and I believe it was under... it was actually listed under insurance. It was lumped into... some of those dollars were lumped into workers' comp, liability, et cetera. We pulled out employer expense and kind of categorized it more appropriately. So, that may be what you're seeing as an anomaly.
Right. It was in 2015, but I don't see it here. Where is it indicated in this report?
Employer expense is $9,500 is the account code? And insurance is $7,600 is our account code. Under expense?
Right. Employer expenses is $51,000, the one that I'm looking at, and insurance is $15,286, if I can read it right.
So, again, employer expense are taxes, medical insurance, workers' comp, 401K matches, those types of things.
So, that employee benefits is part of the employer expense?
Correct.
Number. Okay, that's what I wanted to...
Correct.
All right.
Are there any other questions?
Well, thank you. It's always a pleasure standing before you and having good news to report, and my goal and my hope is that we'll continue to... we'll be able to continue to do this time over time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alyssa, and thank you for showing your range of knowledge of this, your budget and all the figures that Mr. Garpetian is pointing out. Excellent job.
Thank you.
It looks like... for both of you, right. It looks as if you have your work cut out for you, but I think you're up to the task. And with that, I will ask if we have a motion for the city council to note and file the Arts Quarterly Reports.
So moved?
Second.
We'll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. And for the economic development?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Board members Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Chair Devine?
Yes. Thank you. And the next item, please.
Next item is the tech strategy plan report completion.
Mr. Ochoa?
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, ma'am. This is an item that has been a long time in the making. The council had had some discussion at some point, I want to say now, going on 18 months ago, about how to further diversify a very robust business community. But historically, Glendale had been known for the fire businesses, the finance, insurance, real estate, and less for much of anything else. We have evolved more into the entertainment arena. And as was spearheaded by our own councilman Sinanian, when he was the chair at that point of the Economic Development, the fledgling Economic Development Corporation, the issue of how do we further grow into the field of technology? And take advantage of the businesses that may be out there, especially those that are hovering around our hospitals, our studios, and in other areas, again, with the large information, finance, insurance, and real estate system that exists in Glendale today. How do we take advantage of that and ensure that those companies that are engendered here in Glendale stay here in Glendale and further grow and develop? With that, the council gave us the authorization to move forward with a tech initiative strategy with the report, a strategic plan that is here before you. We went out to procure services, and it was not easy. And the council was very discerning in how we went about selecting a consultant, but ultimately, we were able to select the right consultant for us. And so to tell you about that process and tell you about this product, we'll have Deputy Director of Economic Development Darlene Sanchez give you a brief introduction. And she will, I'm sure, turn it over to the good folks at Estelano. With that?
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. The Economic Development Division under your charge is charged with the creation of the ability to create jobs, generate revenue, and also improve the quality of life for our residents and our businesses. And today, I am very proud to present to you a strategy that continues to advance these goals. As Mr. Ochoa says, this is about two years in the making, when we first authorized the consultant team to start researching the tech clustering and develop a plan that continues to build Glendale's ecosystem of technology and innovation. February specifically is when the council brought on ELP advisors to create the Glendale Tech Strategy. And it's been proven to be a true community effort. ELP has engaged with businesses, educators, students, and policymakers such as yourselves who would work closely, and who do work closely with the tech and innovation sectors. So to further describe the findings of what is a very comprehensive study, I'd like to invite co-founder of ELP Advisors and the project manager of the study, Cecilia Estelano.
Thanks, Darlene. Mayor Devine, members of the City Council, I'm Cecilia Estelano with Estelano Lizar Perez Advisors. We're delighted to be able to present to you the work that we've done with your staff on the Glendale Tech Strategy. I guess I will do this. Okay. There must be another way to do it, but, okay. So I'll just give you an overview of what I'm going to present. We're going to talk a little bit about what the tech landscape in Glendale looks like today. Then we'll talk about, dive a little bit into the data. We don't want to go too deep into weeds, but we'll give you a little bit of a sense of who's here, what kind of businesses are here, what kind of strength in different subsectors. Then, thank you, Darlene. Then we'll talk about an assessment of the strengths and weaknesses that Glendale has in the tech sector. Then we'll talk about our recommendations, and then we're open to questions and discussion. So taking it from the top, the first thing we had to do is really understand what's here in Glendale. Whenever you do an economic development strategy for any sector, you have to know, what do you have as your assets in place? And then, based on that assessment, then you can craft strategies to build on your assets and address whatever weaknesses you may have. In the case of tech in particular, connections between entrepreneurs, between tech companies are essential. That is an essential element to success in growing this field. And we learned some interesting things in our interviews, over 25 interviews we did with stakeholders here in Glendale. And then finally, it's really essential that you invest in human capital. Your workforce, your entrepreneurs, they are really the essence of a technology, of high-tech strategy. It's about your intellectual capital, so investing in their knowledge base is critical. So that's what it takes to really promote tech in your city. So how much tech is there in Glendale? We figured this out by looking at the definition of high-tech provided by the L.A. Economic Development Corporation. They looked at 12 sectors. We looked at those categories. They used something called the NAICS code, the North American Industrial Classification System. It's what folks in economic development typically do. And basically, every business in America is asked to self-identify in this giant list of industries, which do you qualify? And you can self-identify in any number of categories. So LAEDC said, there's about 12 categories that we think of as tech. Then we went and talked to your staff, said, are we missing something? Are these the right 12? We adjusted them a little, because we happen to know that in Glendale, you actually have a food tech sector. It's not something that the rest of L.A. County really has, but you have it. So we added that into the mix. So that gives you a sense of the tailoring that we did. After all of that analysis, we crunched the numbers with some colleagues of ours at USC, and we concluded there are 1,000, roughly over 1,000 high-tech firms in Glendale employing more than 40,000 individuals. You have a population that's very well-educated, particularly well-educated in STEM. That's a really excellent asset to have. And then we did some further analysis of how do you compare Glendale's tech sector? And we sliced it in a number of ways. How many businesses, the size of the businesses, the employment of the businesses, the sales, compare it to L.A. County overall. And all of that's in the report. There's a number of charts and tables. We're only going to show you a couple today. You could really get lost in the weeds, and we encourage you to look at the details in the report. So again, to get back to what do we mean by high-tech, these are the subsectors that we looked at, and we gave you some examples so you could get a sense of what we mean. These are businesses that are here in Glendale that would qualify, that have self-identified as having been a part, that are a part of this subsector. So it gives you a sense of what we're talking about. And then, we drill down into the data. So this shows you those subsectors, the number of firms that said they were part of that subsector, and the percentage in Glendale of those firms. Again, these are all in your report. We're not going to spend too much time on it, but we wanted to give you a flavor of some of the analysis we did. We also did an analysis, I'm not going to get too technical, but something where we look at the relative concentration of certain sectors in Glendale versus the rest of the county. And what we found is biopharma, very high concentration here in Glendale. Computer technology, very high concentration. Architectural and engineering services, that's your strength based on relative concentration. So after looking at the data, we then interviewed a number of people, over 25 interviews we conducted. We also convened a technical advisory committee. Councilmember Sinanian was one of the members. And we really wanted to get at, what are the strengths and weaknesses of Glendale? How do you perceive yourself? How are we perceived from outside? And what we found was that the consistent results of these interviews were Glendale's strengths are its high quality of life, it's got a fantastic location, very proximate to a lot of centers of education as well of commerce that people want to be near. Brand Boulevard is a big plus, and the fact that you don't have city business tax. Some weaknesses are, I mentioned, you have a pretty good tech sector, but they don't know each other, right? Remember, one of the important elements is these interconnections, and people know each other, and they network. Well, they don't really know each other. In one case, we had venture capital firms that were literally doors away from each other. They didn't even know they existed in the same town, right? So that's a significant weakness. We also found that you have office space, but as this city manager Ochoa was saying, it's a remnant of your old strengths, right? It's fire, it's old, it's old kind of office space, the kind of stuff that insurance companies and real estate companies would want. It's not the kind of tech space that these startups want to be in. And then, some folks had mentioned that they experienced some delays in permitting. And then there's also a weakness that along Brand Boulevard, there's a lack of broadband, right? That high-speed internet is difficult to get. These are significant for tech companies. So then, based on that, and a lot of research, we came up with really five big recommendations. And we're going to go through these in greater detail. Again, we're not going to get super in the weeds, because we want to spend some time on questions and answers. But one of the first recommendations is, we got to market Glendale both internally and externally as it is a tech center. It really is, but people just don't know it. So we're going to talk about some of our recommendations there. We want to build on the fact that you're already perceived accurately as a business-friendly city, but let's tailor that to the tech industry. Third, we want to make sure that there's actually physical space for tech companies to grow and flourish. And then, remember, I talked about how important your human capital workforce is. We have some recommendations about that. And then finally, there are some recommendations about quality of life improvements that you all can make here in Glendale, that you actually are already planning, that you want to highlight and promote, because they will highlight to this important workforce in this sector that this is a great place to be. And it's getting better all the time. Okay, so going on to the recommendations on marketing, I talked about internal marketing and external marketing. One of the most important recommendations we have is to help foster the creation of a tech-focused group, an advocacy group here in Glendale. We think that the city can help it get created, but at the end of the day, the success in promoting this industry has to come from the industry itself. This is not a government-run, government-driven thing. It's really about these entrepreneurs connecting each other, having those, sitting on each other's boards, promoting each other's businesses, using each other's supply chains, getting the attention of venture capitalists. That has to come from within, but you all can kind of get it jump-started. And the good news is, the city has already started to do that with some of the activities it conducted during the time we were doing this study. We also have some recommendations about building a civic technology infrastructure. You already have a wonderful start with that, which is your performance management system in Glendale, your website that's up, that provides lots of transparent data. We think some enhancements there could actually, again, signal to the tech community that this is a smart, forward-thinking city. This is a place that understands the value of its data and would be interested in having folks use that data to drive better civic outcomes. And then, of course, we want to attract trade shows and conferences. We have a couple of ideas of folks you might want to attract. And we want to leverage industry networks that are already here in Glendale. I'll mention one right off the bat, is the Armenian Engineers and Scientists of America. It exists here, it has a huge membership here in Glendale. That's a network that can be leveraged to maybe bring in more trade shows and other things. Okay, so I talked about this tech-focused organization. We're going to spend a little time on that, because this is such a central recommendation. One of the first things we need to do is identify who within the existing tech community want to take the lead on that. And the good news is, through some of the activities that your Economic Development Division has been working on, like Tech on Tap, which is this great monthly networking program, event, as well as the Tech Week, which was wildly successful, we've seen these leaders start to come together and identify and step up and say, yeah, I'm kind of interested in being part of this leadership. We think then, once those core leaders have stepped forward, the city can help make this accelerate by bringing them, convening them, making sure they get their mission statement, maybe giving them a little seed money so they can get their 501(c)(3), things like that. Don't fund them completely, not that, they need to bring themselves together, but you can help guide them a little bit. It ultimately has to be driven by the business community. So then, moving on to promoting Glendale's business-friendly environment, we talked about Brand Boulevard. It's an asset, but it also is a weakness, right? So one of the things that the city can do is promote the transformation and the repositioning of some of the old, kind of little bit tired office space into the type of office space that these tech businesses would like to see. We have a great example of that already, the old Mason's Building, which is fabulous, what CBRE has done. And it's starting to change people's views of how to organize their office space. So that's already a beginning. And then you have a great business concierge program. Just tweak it a little bit and target it for the tech community. They have little different needs, maybe have a little different site on the website, have a little different promotional materials, and I think it'll get their attention. Okay, and I'm going to keep moving, because I know you guys have a lot to do. Really important to talk about creating a space in the programs for tech. When I mean space, I mean physical space. So people think about application development, they think of coworking spaces. Those are important, but we don't want to forget industrial space. It's very scarce in Los Angeles. You have it. It is pretty good quality. What we know about these companies is they need a place to grow and do products and try prototypes. We know that for media companies in particular, they need to have access to industrial space where they can do some different things that wouldn't be appropriate in an office environment. So one of our strong recommendations is resist whatever pressure you may have to convert that industrial space to residential use or any other non-manufacturing uses. It's rare, hold on to it. It's very important to your existing legacy companies, but it also could be the key for your future tech companies. Second, we think that you have, I mentioned how important biopharma and bioscience is here in Glendale. You've got wonderful assets with your hospitals. North Glendale is a great space potentially for expansion of those facilities and attraction of companies that are looking to do biopharma, research and development, health applications, maybe even biomedical devices. So this is one of those places that, as you think about your economic development strategy, think about North Glendale as a potential place for that. And then lastly, there's a lot of attention these days about incubators, accelerators, that kind of thing, right? I think everybody wants to have an incubator and accelerator. We did a deep dive on this, and we're going to spend a little time on this, because I know it's very important to the council. So just to bring you up to speed, there's sort of three terms that gets thrown around a lot. One is an accelerator, an incubator, and coworking space. And this summarizes the differences between them. Really, an incubator is a place where companies can stay, and it's a physical place where usually they get kind of cheaper rent, and they get to stay there for two, three years until they can launch, till they can kind of make it on their own. And there are some programs to support them there. They have some programming involved. Maybe they do shared conference rooms and things like that. And usually, they try to have incubators related to a particular industry. So Los Angeles has gone hard on green tech, so they have a clean tech incubator in the Arts District in downtown L.A. Now, accelerator's different. An accelerator is super competitive. An accelerator is, we throw out a competition, we say, we're looking for the five best new ideas, new companies that are ready to launch. And it's very competitive, and you have a panel of well-experienced entrepreneurs who can evaluate how well these companies are, how well positioned they are to actually grow and thrive. And then, when you get into that highly competitive cohort, there's 90 days of very focused support. There's mentorship. There's one-on-one interaction with an experienced entrepreneur. You're introducing them to venture capitalists. You're having programs for them. So the idea is that you give them a lot of attention for 90 days, and then after that, they get to do a pitch day to a bunch of investors, and we hope that that one of them or all of them will get picked up by investors and they'll go public. Very different model, right? Incubators about space, accelerators about programming, intense mentorship. And then finally, coworking space is just kind of a physical space that's very flexible, relatively inexpensive. You've got a cappuccino maker, you've got some conference facilities, you have some programming that makes it very attractive. It's very hip, it's very cool. These are happening all over the place. You don't have a particular industry you're trying to attract. You have, you know, artsy people, you have tech people, all there together. A lot of young people, you might have nonprofits. And the idea is that together, they're going to be sharing, they're going to be rubbing elbows, that great things might happen, creatively, great thing might happen. So I'm sorry I spent so much time on it, but it's really an important one of the recommendations. So those are the differences.
Don't be, don't feel rushed and don't be sorry at all. Take your time.
I appreciate that, councilmembers. So here's what we recommend for you. We think you should do an accelerator. You're a city where coworking spaces already kind of exist, you already kind of have some incubators. You're a city that will probably get more coworking spaces because you have a lot of the elements that coworking spaces want. You have a lot of really great amenities. You have wonderful retail, it's really high quality of life. Brand Boulevard's really coming along. You have super smart residences, you have, like I said, that high proportion of STEM educated people. So you don't need to put money into creating a space, those spaces will come. But the thing that hasn't happened here is this notion of an ecosystem wrapping itself around really great companies that might be able to launch. And that's also something that you can do in partnership with that burgeoning tech cluster that you already have, and some of the tech leaders that have decided to step up and be leaders, right? You can do it in partnership with them. You can bring in GCC that has wonderful programs. You can bring in the Workforce Development Agency. You can bring a lot of partners in here and wrap them around this cohort, and it's relatively low cost. The model that we spelled out in our appendix to our report costs you about $46,000 to do a cohort of five. Try it. If it doesn't work, you didn't lose that much money. It's really different than like buying a building, rehabbing it, you know, trying to get people in. You know, that's millions of dollars, right? The L.A. Clean Tech Incubator, I think the city put in like 11, 12 million dollars into it. That was, a lot of money came from the Department of Water and Power, and a lot came from the Redevelopment Agency that I used to run. That was expensive. It's had great results, but it's taken them years to get there. It's had great results, but it's taken them years to get there. This is sort of a low-risk strategy. It's also a way to kind of continue to build that ecosystem of tech companies. And because you have co-working spaces interested in Glendale, you can partner with them because they need to fill up their space. And you could say, hey, tell you what, we'll guarantee that you will have at least five spaces filled by our cohort for 90 days. Give us a break, give us a cost break on that, and we'll put our cohort in there and we'll really promote your space, and we'll do all kinds of events around it, and we'll tell everybody what a great co-working space is. And you'll probably be able to get that kind of a relationship with those co-working people. And then, lastly, we talked about this, it's another way to actively build relationships with seed, with kind of first-stage investors, angel investors, VC investors, which are the lifeblood of tech companies. You have some here, but people just don't think of Glendale as the place to locate their business. You know, VCs don't come to Southern California and say, wow, I really need to go visit Glendale. They might now, after you did Tech Week, that was very successful, but if you start to have this type of accelerator, it'll get people to think about Glendale as a different type of city. So those are our recommendations on whether to do an accelerator or an incubator. Okay, we're almost done on our recommendations. We talked a lot about supporting a tech workforce. There's three kind of big buckets here. Career awareness, that doesn't mean anything, but what we really mean is you have a great educational system, you have K-12 and GCC already doing educational partnerships. It'd be really nice if they did some of their dual enrollment programs where you can get credit for, college credit for, in high school, but focus it on STEM, focus on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Work experience. You could develop a tech leadership academy here in Glendale that would take some of your brightest students from Glendale City College and get them into paid internships with tech startups. That would be amazing because it exposes them not only to the work of tech, but to what it's really like to start up a company, the entrepreneurship of it, the difficulty of trying to attract investors. And so we have some models that we've put in our report that you may want to replicate. And then lastly, on continuing education, Glendale's also kind of interesting because you have this media workforce in here with Disney and others, and people have jobs, they lose jobs, there's very much of a gig economy in that particular sector. So you already have your Workforce Development Agency looking at putting together a program called Beyond Jobs based on stuff that's been done in the UK where you're not going to change the fact that a lot of these jobs are gig economy jobs in the media, it's just how it is, how it's organized, but you can help folks be more successful at it by helping them get their next gig and also making sure that they stay current on changes in technology so they get upskilled in the latest technology, whether it's virtual reality or, you know, whatever the latest software is. They can continue to take classes that will help them get the next gig. So that's the continuing education piece. And again, GCC is a good partner for that. And then last on our recommendations are quality of life. So three areas. One is transportation. We've talked a lot about Brand Boulevard, we're going to talk about it again. It's perceived as having a little bit of a transportation hiccup, right? You have some congestion there, so we would recommend taking a look at something innovative. I don't know if you want to do something around bike share, if you want to do something around doing a pilot around autonomous vehicles, car share, something so that folks can get up and down Brand Boulevard, they can connect to the old office space that we hope will become tech office space, and easily get to the retail down at Americana. So some way to make it really easy for people to feel like Brand Boulevard is this corridor of innovation and activity, right? And there are a number of ways you can do that. Second is public space. You have beautiful public space, and if you did something like Space 134, I don't know where that is today, but it's bold, and it's the type of thing that appeals to the workforce you're trying to attract. So if you do move forward on that, promote the heck out of it. Make it a centerpiece of your tech attractions strategy. We also know that you're working on your new park, right, related to where your new library is going to be. That's also going to be a beautiful civic space. We know that because we're working on it as well. So I would say that that's another big plus that you want to pitch. And then lastly is public sector innovation. And what we mean by that is, again, this notion that there's a vibe in the city that the city government itself is continuously innovating. It's trying new things. It's doing things like the Glendale performance metrics. It's not afraid to open up its data and allow people to have hackathons to help solve civic problems. So that, again, shows folks that this is a city that's constantly trying to improve itself and is not afraid of technological innovation. So those are our big recommendations. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you very much for the opportunity to work on this. We've very much enjoyed getting to know folks in Glendale, and thank you, Councilmember Sinani, for your leadership. You were wonderful in participating on that tech advisory committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that report and for all of the work that you put into this process. Are there comments, questions from my fellow council members?
I have a question. Thank you for enlightening me on the difference between the incubator and the accelerator. But generally, who's going to, are those workspaces and management consulting slash technical consulting? Who pays for that? The city generally, or?
So we think, we think part of having this sector advocacy organization is they can help fund some of this themselves. Or if you do in partnerships with Glendale Community College, they have some resources or jointly, this group can seek funding. The city could put some money into it, so when I talked about the $46,000, it would pay for some of the programming. But part of what you're trying to do is, like with the co-working space, if you launch it there, you make a deal with them. You get really cut-rate space or maybe you pay a dollar, a dollar for 90 days or a dollar a month. Because for them, being able to say that they've hosted, they're hosting the tech cohort, that is brand value for them, right? So there's, so it's not really the city's job to manage all of it, it's really the city's job to help bring folks together to make it happen. We don't think you probably need to pay for all of it. We probably think your contribution's about $46,000 for that small cohort.
I'm sorry, would you explain that one more time?
Sure. And actually, Richard, if you want to join me?
The concept of a dollar a foot or what have you?
So the idea would be, they're going to charge folks for their space. There's a regular, they would, one of the co-working space. Say it's WeWork or just one of those, you know, that, they're all over the place, right? And they've got their business model, but they have to build a brand here in Glendale. And so if you said to them, we will bring you five people to occupy space, and you can say that you've got this corner of your WeWork space is the tech space, that has value to them, that they are, of all the other ones running around with, you know, co-working space, they got the tech cohort. And you do the pitch in their building, the pitch at the end of the 90 days where you have venture capitalists and angel investors there. That's of great value to them. And then all the promotional materials feature WeWork. I only use WeWork as an example, I'm not saying that you would use them, but whatever, you know, ACME co-working space. So there's value to them, and it's likely that you might be able to get a lower rate to rent that space for the 90 days. It's my suggestion.
Sinani, are you done?
Yeah.
That would, I mean, I'm sort of absorbing this and thinking out the scenarios, but as far as questioning, I yield the floor.
Go ahead, I'll go in.
You want me to go first? Or you want to go first? Because you champion this thing, so you want?
No, it's okay, you go. I'll still champion it afterwards.
The tech leadership idea, the academy is a great idea. I think it's a, if he can land that, that's a great accomplishment.
Thank you.
So the accelerator, after 90 days, they work really hard and we bring different venture capitals and put them together. Do we bring them and put them together, or they have to go find people to come in and meet with them?
So, again, the organization that's organizing this accelerator, of which you may be just a member, right? Your staff would not be responsible for finding the venture. That's just not what they do, right? So it would be the tech businesses who have stepped up to form this organization. Let's just call it Glendale Tech. I'm just going to say that's the name of it. The people of Glendale Tech, this is going to be their signature project. So they would go beat the bushes. They'd take all of their friends that they know who are venture capitalists and bring them to the pitch sessions, because that's what they do. They are tech companies. They got venture capital, so they would use their contacts and say, hey, come to our tech, to our pitch day, you know, so-and-so who funded my first and second round, come to the pitch day, we've got some great businesses here in Glendale, you're going to be amazed, right? So that, they would be responsible. You, as a city, would really just probably be helping to provide some coordination, some promotion of it, but that, it's not what your city does, and we wouldn't suggest that that's expertise you would need to acquire.
So basically, we have to, as a city, give incentives to businesses so they can come up with an idea and put a group together, a nonprofit or what have you, so they can attract the, follow the accelerators and bring joint venture capitals to put them all together. And hopefully after, let's say one of them goes for an IPO, what happens to that company? Do they, how do we keep them here in Glendale?
Well, the hope is that they'd want to stay here, right? Because in that 90-day period, they would have met Darlene and Jennifer, and if they had any permitting questions, they would have been answered immediately. They would have learned all about your new high-speed internet. I mean, so they would have gotten to know the city, so they feel like, oh, this is a pretty cool city, and they're helping to fund my program, why would I not stay? Because now I've met all these connections, I've met all these other people in my sector in the tech world, this is a good place to be, and it's fun because you've got these cool places to go, and it's a good place to raise a family, it's close to everything, it's really easy to get around. So the idea is, you know, people want to stay in Glendale.
Sure.
And if I can add too, part of the big thing is those connections with that tech advisory group. Because of Tech Week, because of Glendale Tech on Tap, all of these folks that are already in Glendale have come out in the woodwork. The two VC firms that she mentioned are already people that have talked to us and said, I want to help other people, I want to help grow this in Glendale. So not only the promotion of our end, on the city's end of, you know, we're going to help you through the permitting process, but they're, they have the connections now in Glendale with those VC firms, which is what they want, that access to the money. And if they can build those relationships here, there's a better chance of having them stay here, like Cecilia said.
And how do we leverage our position? As you said, the tech industry is in Glendale already, and many people don't know about it. And how do we leverage against that and attract companies that are in tech business already, and they want to have a second location, especially companies that have light manufacturing component to it? Because that's what brings the highest-paying jobs, that's what brings all the tech people out, that's why we'll change the, basically, the, put Glendale on the map, if you will. So that's one of my questions. How do we approach the companies that are there already, the large companies, Silicon Valley is one of the places, but there are in other states that they may want to relocate, and how do we get them leveraging against our position that we have in Glendale?
So I think it's all about connections, right? So to the extent that you've positioned yourself as the city that gets it, that's helpful. But that's why we go back to that talk about manufacturing area. You have to have a place for companies to land. So there's two places we think they can land. If they need business space, if they need office space, let's reposition some of that stuff on brand so it's more attractive, it's not sort of old and stodgy. And the stuff that's in the industrial area, let's reposition that for the kind of companies that you're talking about, because those are two assets. They're two different kinds of spaces, and tech is so broad, we don't know what kind of company may want to come. So you want to have kind of a diverse set of assets to offer up to them. So that's our suggestion.
Because most of these companies, they want to be close to each other.
That's right.
The companies that all want to be in that one block, and they pay like $15 a square foot on office rent, but they want to be next to each other because of the prestige or they feed off of each other, if you will. Also, I have a question for, on the zoning, the biopharma industry, what is the zoning that will allow that in North Glendale if you want to rezone a portion of the North Glendale? This is, I don't want to start a riot in North Glendale tomorrow that you're rezoning everything, but we want to say.
I think you'd be looking at our hospital zones, I think you'd be looking at some of our denser commercial zones, not necessarily industrial or manufacturing zones, but that would be the clean tech that we would be looking towards. We do have, where we, it's important to point out, we have, I believe, an 11% Class A office vacancy right now. So even in those somewhat outmoded buildings, there isn't a lot of space there. But where there is space, it's going to be there, and what you, as a council, have been doing more recently in your, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, to advise that or inform you that the Verdugo Hills USC Hospital is going to follow suit, plans to follow suit with the other hospitals in town and put in place a medical and a hospital zone that allows them to innovate. I think that's where you're going to see the greatest opportunity. You know, if we're talking about, you know, starting riots in North Glendale, you know, we also can talk about Site A, just down the service road from Verdugo Hills Hospital that could, that's owned by the city wholly, that is adjacent to the freeway, not surrounded by any resident, that possibly could be the site for a larger, more ambitious campus once we evolve to that degree.
And lastly, as far as transportation and connectivity, we are working on Brand Boulevard for the streetcar.
Yeah.
But I think more immediately, we can maybe bring the idea of the trolley back, to have the trolley back and forth going up and down the street.
Actually bringing that tonight to city council.
Okay, because I think we had that at one point for a few months, it was a, and it's not just the connectivity of it, it's fun to ride on a trolley. It's not, doesn't have to be only a transportation-related. It's a fun thing to do. I mean, I lived up in Northern California for many years, and cable cars and trolleys were the funnest thing we could get a ride on. So it's not just because it gets you from point A to point B, but it's a fun thing to do as well, and we can use that for advertising and many other things. So I think the trolley should come back.
I'll get your second on that tonight.
Okay.
Councilmember Sinani, you finished?
My colleagues finished. So thank you to my colleagues for the thoughtful questions and thoughts, and thank you, Cecilia, thank you for the hard work that you've done. I think it's a very good report, and you guys certainly were very meticulous and systematic and patient in coming up with the report, and there was great cooperative spirit throughout the process. So just a few observations. I think we started this, and you know, this idea came to me because I, sure, as anyone who's been in Glendale for a while, you come across this unproven fact that there's a lot of high-tech activity going on in Glendale, yet Glendale's not on the map, it's not. So one of the first things we wanted to know is whether Glendale did have a sector, and how robust the sector was. I think the conclusion is, it does have that sector, it's pretty robust. Yet, it has arisen and developed on its own. It's not, nothing that we've sort of helped along, nothing that we feel like we've been able to direct in one way, in one direction or another, which I think is fraught with risk, because we've had other industries in Glendale that have blossomed in the past, they've been, the city has become so, almost over-reliant on those industries, and those industries have all but disappeared now. And we've had probably a couple of cycles of that happen in the last 15, 20 years. So knowing that high-tech is sort of the economy of the future, how do we better shape it? How do we better shape it? How do we have more control over it so that we're not, we're not left at the mercy of the market only? And I think this report is a great step in that direction. I don't, yeah, and I think the report states it, that we're not, the city is not in the business of running high-tech companies or accelerators or anything like that, but what we are in the business of is promoting jobs, creating high-paying jobs, keeping up with the trends in the economy. And our involvement, however we proceed with the recommendations, stays within those confines, I believe. Again, we have restrictions that the free market doesn't have. I mean, we're dealing with our constituents' monies, taxpayers' monies, and we have to be very careful and frugal with it. At the same time, again, I believe that being in control of one's own destiny, and destiny in this case happens to be our economy, especially the future of our economy, is a responsible thing to do, and it is worth directing some taxpayer dollars at. So the accelerator, incubator, co-working space, these recommendations, procedurally, what does council do with this? Do we, are we going to see another report, or are we going to think about this? And what are we going to?
If you were to accept the report as it's submitted, or as it might be ultimately approved, I mean, we're already hearing from council that there are elements of it that you want to see accelerated forward. So we're talking, we'll include the discussion on trolley, presumably in budget, we'll include discussion on the accelerator, competitive accelerator program in the budget. We'll see some of these other things in the budget. Probably, if I had to estimate right now, would be a mix of the things that we know we can get done sooner to generate some momentum, and then those things that are longer-term, more ambitious, we would just keep tabs on them. Now, as Cecilia had indicated, one of the things that we do each quarter is, you know, we Now, as Cecilia had indicated, one of the things that we do each quarter is, you know, we, we collect all of our performance indicators, and so as, as, I think the next thing that comes back to council is a set of metrics to say, here's, you know, return on investment, how we're going to gauge it. Here's how we will keep score, and then be able to report that back to you as we do everything else. And so you, this is a living, breathing document, I think ultimately is, is how you would view this going forward.
Okay. So, kind of a process, and you're going to keep pushing it forward?
Yes.
And keep, sometimes piecemeal?
Sometimes.
Counsel?
But I think to the extent, for example, if we were doing a competitive accelerator program, you all went to Tech Week, and you went to some of those events and, and the, the Pitch Fest that we had there. If we were to strike the deal that, that's, that's contemplated by way of the, the new co-working places that are coming into town, as you know, we, I think we have three of them now, to strike that deal and say, "Okay, the city council has blessed the, our, our public-private partnership has blessed an amount of funding that will cover the cost of a cohort to move through." We probably have some type of competitive evaluative process utilizing the similar kind of advisory committee to select those lucky entrepreneurs to step into that cohort. And then, and then it runs through, and at the end of the 90 days comes back to some kind of public process. So, you will have, it maybe, it'll feel sporadic, but it will be meaningful as you move through because this is something that is going to be rather high-profile.
And I hope it is. And I think that it'll keep our residents interested and create a lot of excitement throughout Glendale. One question for Mrs. Stolano. You said that our website is a good sort of, like a starting point or an example of something that is suggestive of like our, our investment or our involvement with high-tech. Is our website better than other cities? Is that, I'm, I'm trying to get a gauge on that.
I'm probably, I'm a little uncomfortable evaluating your website overall. What I was referencing was your Glendale Performance Management website, just the fact that you have really, you have a really nice, that's a great landing page. And it's got, you know, here are the, the items that we're tracking. You click on it, you've got the data there, you get more detail if you want to click on it. That's great. And it's, and it's live, and I presumably, city manager or chair, you update that quarterly or-
We, we do the quarterly updates. I think, again, looking forward to the budget, one of the things that we are, we are keenly focused on, we're, we're evolving in the internal audit function right now just by staff attrition, and it'll give us an opportunity to stand up an innovation office, which is not cutting-edge. There are more and more cities, but one of the profiles of leading-edge cities is to look at all the data that we collect, because we collect a lot of data, and then do something more with it than cover, you know, CYA, right? To say, "Okay, we are, we are collecting this information, and we use it to track how we progress on our goals." But maybe there's a more abstract way to use it. You step back and have those auditors that, that have this tremendous comprehensive knowledge, along with some abstract free thinkers on staff who have the, the latitude to bring in everything from an anthropologist, if we're looking at, at community resources, to a futurist, if we're looking at, and say, "Okay, how does this all fit together?" I think the information you find on the website is the beginnings of that. We shouldn't be afraid of, of doing those hackathons and say, "Okay, folks, first prize is the Golden Loving Cup," bragging rights if nothing else, "for those residents that can help us best deal or come up with a new idea on, on running red lights on red, on right turns." I mean, something like that. We can have a little fun with it. I think it'll demonstrate that we're willing to engage folks, and, and overall, it gets to that, that innovation and the way people communicate, that is part of this report. And it really wouldn't have happened without the council saying, "Staff, we want you to go down this road."
Okay. And one more question I had was whether, okay, I was listening to you so attentively that I forgot my own question. But do we, do we have any news from WeWorks or Impact Hub or one of those shared spaces? I thought there was a lot of interest.
I don't know that we have public information as yet. I'm looking at our, our Cheshire Cats.
But private information?
The great thing even about going through the draft and drafting this strategy has been this spark. And so, it's created this spark, and so we've put out the feelers, but we don't have any public information at this time. But it's definitely something that's been on the radar for months now.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. I'll just, just state in, in the end that Glendale has so many advantages over many, many, if not most, other municipalities in this general area, in the LA metropolitan area. And we've had, we, not only do we have our geographic location, not only do we have the expertise, the workforce, we, we actually already have this robust sector. So, let's take it to the next level. Let's make Glendale a spot, you know, for, for high-tech, and make, make it a name that people associate with, with high-tech industries. And that way, we gear up for what's coming our way tomorrow.
Okay.
So, thank you, again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
And thank, thank you for that, for the report. When I first, no, when I first saw that I was having this conference on the high-tech and this was all going on, I thought, "Well, this is for the future." But now I realize it is not the future, it is now. It is, it is today, it was yesterday. I am encouraged, and I have to compliment staff, that, that we are already progressing in this. We've actually started in the right direction with Tech on Tap and, and the, the conference that you had. Of course, my main concern was about fiscal responsibility and how much this would, the, the city financially would have to take responsibility. And so, I feel a bit comforted by the fact that you're saying for $46,000, we can maybe really get a head start on a, on a, an accelerator program. I think the community involvement sounds very encouraging. I know that, I was told, just as, as we've heard today, that there are entrepreneurs and people in our community that are ready to step up, and that's, that's really good news. The other bit of this that I really appreciate is the fact that jobs, that we will possibly, this will mean more jobs, jobs that stay here and increase our revenue. And that's very important for the future of our city. I, you know, I just, my, another fear I had was that this report was going to go and sit on a shelf, and nothing would happen with it. But I can see that that's not the case at all, that we've already started and we, we can continue. I think it's, it's a great, the educational component, I think, is fantastic. And being a former educator, I really appreciate all of, all of the information about our community and, and the, the young people that live here. Takes me back to the old work experience programs that we had in school where we, you know, sent kids out and, and they were mentored and had jobs in the community. And this is absolutely the same thing, and I think it's, it'll be fantastic for our, for our young people. So, I think it's important that we continue this effort. I can, and I, again, compliment our staff and those of you that did this report, and I look for the next step, because I think we should take the next step, and, and we'll see to that in, in the future.
Can I make a quick comment to perhaps put things into perspective and maybe set your mind even more at ease about whatever city's involvement maybe with this? I just want to remind you, about two months ago, maybe less, two months ago, the city approved, if I'm not mistaken, close to $220,000 or $230,000 in a grant to a restaurant and a bakery. Those, if that's the kind of resources we're ready to spend on a single or two businesses, certainly using money to promote an entire industry, to promote an entire, you know, industry that involves high-paying jobs has to be worth it.
Absolutely.
And has to be fiscally responsible.
Absolutely. And I'm, I'm glad that, that that was made clear today, and thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Sananian for his proactive approach to this, this project. And I want to say also that I, I think that through this report, we really have a good idea of what our city's all about, and that, that's always a positive outcome. So, thank you all very much. So, I think we're ready for a, a motion for-
We'll move it.
Mr. San- Okay. Second roll call, please.
Councilmembers Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you.
Motion.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
And for the Economic Development Corporation?
Do we have a?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.